It is now 6:30 and we're going to begin with the first agenda item, which is a redistricting update.
All right, Chris, can you bring up that PowerPoint, please? And Mary Beth, I think, if you want to do redistricting, we'll talk real quickly and I'll move this one forward. I'll move this one forward, it's easy to say.
Hi.
Hi.
Sure, this is, yeah, the redistricting.
It's on the very first slide on this one. I just need this one to start. Yeah. There you go.
Leave one for, uh, right. Miss Spears asked.
That's the first slide.
Oh, well, I, we couldn't remember.
We couldn't remember.
All right, guys, that's what we're all going to talk about as we get there. Mary Beth, I'll let you lead into a little discussion on redistricting.
Okay. Well, if you recall, back in 2021, the city retained the services of Slaughter and Associates to do a redistricting plan for the city. Slaughter and Associates held a public meeting regarding that and they presented information. As you know, the redistricting is based upon the 2020 census data. And they provided a PowerPoint on September 21st to the council. And there were various images like this in there, right? Where they were showing you which districts were above the target population, which districts were below, and the fact that there was a need to redistrict. We ended up closing out their contract, just so we weren't having to carry the purchase order over while we worked through the election. And we're now ready to reengage them. So I've handed out the schedule. It's also up on the screen. What we are asking for is your approval of a contract to reengage Slaughter and Associates on Monday evening. That will be on your agenda. The contract price is the same as what it was in 2021. There's been a little price escalation. They've added in an additional public meeting. The previous contract, just by the way, we spent about $5,800 on the previous one at FERC. So we're asking for your approval of that contract on Monday night. And then, working on the schedule with a consultant, they're looking at preparation of a plan to try and get the districts more equal the month of June. We anticipate a public meeting being held on that plan on July 17th, would be here in the council chambers. Then a public hearing on the plan on August 14th. And assuming all of that goes forward with, you know, out issue, then, once the plan is finalized, we would have legal descriptions prepared and then ask the council to adopt that plan on September 11th. So, again, happy to answer any questions that you may have, but...
Would you mind rescinding that information that we had before?
Sure.
I mean, I know we've shared a little map, but just to have it.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Of course.
I think we had a website, right? A page about redistricting or information?
We may have, Samantha may have set that up. And certainly, once we get to that public outreach piece, we'll certainly do that to make sure the public has full information, is aware of the meetings and so forth. Yes, of course.
And the public hearing on August 14th, that's a council meeting night. So you mean the public hearing will be during a council meeting?
Yes.
Separate event, okay?
And obviously, as we move through this, if an additional meeting is needed or we need to adjust schedule, we could do that.
Is the public meeting on the plan on July 17th, is that the first time that the consultants will reveal their recommended?
Yes.
Redistricting map?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And this is, and as you recall from Slaughter and Associates, they're the consulting firm that just did the city's district maps the last time. This is one of their firm's specialties in terms of doing districting.
Yeah, and while we're looking for the equitable districts, I think the other part of that is, they also factor in growth. They look at, you know, where the growth areas are. So they find the balance as far as number in the district, but also understand, hey, there's certain areas that can grow, some that can't. And so they'll get as close as they can while also adjusting as needed. They're just the professional side and bring us something, I guess, July 17th.
And that public meeting on the, excuse, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The public meeting on the 17th does not have to be attended by council members. That's, I mean, you know, and we'll probably do a head count to see if there would be a quorum at that meeting or not. But it's just intended really for the general public and council may attend. So we'll figure that out as we get closer to that date.
And the sheet is on the first page of your packet.
Yes, correct. Well, it's actually the second page, because the first page was just kind of going through all the different things that we're going to go through, which is just an update on everything, so, yeah.
Any other questions regarding the redistricting?
Thanks, Mary Beth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, we have the fitness trail at Dublin Park on our agenda. Do we, Cory, do we have somebody from Rotary here? Or do you want us to move it to the end of the agenda to see if? Oh, he wants a table, so we don't need to move it to the end of this meeting. Okay, all right, we'll postpone that. Okay, Ms. Your Budget Amendment.
All right, so I guess as we go through, Admiral Starp, I think, and Roger for continuing to keep us all herded in the right direction. And obviously, Steve in the mayor's office and us continuing, and then lastly, the department heads. So we've just continued to go back and forth, trying to take what we felt like was good budget and make it better. So I'll start with, in some of the, you know, we didn't really kind of tie everything together, at least, you know, you guys will get the full budget, I think, as Finance Committee passes it on to the full council. But just to give folks an idea, if you look at, there's three funds at the top. Fund 10 is our general fund. Fund 71 is our debt service fund. And Fund 76 is the municipal capital fund that, in essence, we're starting this in this. So if you look at the top line, cash in bank, it goes all the way across. You can see the total for all of that was $53 million. Less, we're taking about $12.453 million and putting it into a special capital fund that in turn documents what is, you know, in essence, I think we're, from a, in Roger's standpoint, he knows that money is there for these respective projects. Then we can move forward with those projects. That would leave the cash balance at the end of the year for all three of those at $41 million. So that's where we are. We can come back to that in a minute. How do we get there? Well, one of the ways we get there, as we look at mid-year to adjust some of the revenue and expense numbers, probably the two main ones that I wanted to update. Our franchise fees that we have with Madison Utilities and Huntsville Utilities, we're bumping from our current, our budget. So at mid-year, we're adding $305,000 and we still think that's conservative. And then interest, interest with, you know, the only good thing that's happening in a lot of instances with a lot of the interest rates is that we make some more money. Especially in one of the things I commend to the Finance Committee, when they put our finances out to bid, they in turn got better rates. And in turn means this budget will have about $420,000 more dollars in it. So at the end of the year, part of where we see some of the cash numbers come up is because there's another $725,000. We didn't put SSUT in here, which is the internet sales tax, but it's going to be substantially higher also. But we chose not to move that up, just to leave it as is. So a couple of different things. So when you look at, on this page here, on the far right, the $12,453,000, what comprises that are these projects? So it talks about the remainder of what's needed for the community center is put in this fund. Again, the goal, and I have a meeting with the MVP folks tomorrow, is to raise the money where we don't have to dig into that. But that is there in case, and so that community center is funded based on that. It puts $550,000, and all of this was approved verbally by you guys about two council meetings ago. This transitions it and kind of shows you what it'll look like. Phase one of Sunshine Oaks, the Hexagon Building is the purchase of the building and the next phase. The Wayfinding project, you know, again, we think that's a high number as far as 750. I'm going to go with each, through each one of these independently, but I wanted it in here to start with. The Hardeman Roundabout of 1.5 million. And then the Royal Drive Extension, we'll talk about that in a minute. That would be 1.6, so that, 1.26. So that equates to about $12.4 million that will go into that special capital fund, 38, that will be sitting there to complete these projects out of our general fund budget. So a couple of things to tie along with that. Wanted to give you an idea, those are a couple of brand new pictures from the community center. We estimate it's about 30% complete right now. Moving along, I think at some point, Steve, I know you've taken council through that. We can do that again, but making, I know they're ahead of schedule and inside now. So a lot of that, they'll continue through the summer months, making great headway there. Hexagon Complex.
Is there an approximate completion date, just ballpark like November 24 or just ballpark August 24?
August 24, yeah.
I have a question about the community center.
Okay.
Um, how does it affect MVP's fundraising for the community center if we have it fully funded in our budget from city money? Is that going to deter their fundraising efforts?
We don't think so.
Okay.
Hexagon Complex, a couple of different things. One, we purchased the building, the 23A building. So that's in here, it's already moved over. And then the second part of that, if we look at kind of what we've talked about there before, and most of these are already moving forward. The outdoor pickleball courts with lighting, the lighting for the soccer and, or the softball fields, the ballpark fencing. So one of the things that we looked at is the fencing that was there was just not satisfactory, dangerous, and needed to be replaced. And so we've got an estimate that is a good number. We also feel like we can add a dog park there, put some fencing in there and make sure, you know, from that side of town, that they have a place that is safe for dogs, especially with a lot of the adults that are going to be on that. And then, one of the neat things that council will be able to vote on Monday night is we're bringing a rental contract from the Hexagon team where employees of the City of Madison would be able to utilize the fitness facility for themselves. And we, as a city, will be able to utilize the gym as we need it. And that's a big deal for us, because we just can't get all the rental space, I mean, all the rental time that we need for our basketball leagues. And a lot of that's because the middle schools and high schools are utilizing, a lot of times, their auxiliary gyms. So that gives us the ability to rent that also.
And I'll just say, that's huge for our police and fire to have gym facilities.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So we're in the overall thing, we have about $1 million for this. Right now, we're only using about $830,000 of that. And that's for phase one, it would accomplish all of that. And we feel like it can be done within the next six months, I think, is easily, you know, something that can be done. Again, part of what we're continuing to see, when we tried to build out the pickleball, didn't have any bidders. And then you have to turn around and go back. And then it gives Cory and team the ability to go negotiate for coming in and doing that. They're already moving that forward and going down the line there. Wayfinding, Mary Beth's brought that to you guys a couple of different times. It's getting to the point where we're getting ready to probably bid that out. It's in the budget. And so, but we move it over into this capital fund. So again, this, we feel like it's a high number, but we want to make sure we're covered. And I think in this case, you'll be able, when we bid that, you'll be able to show council everything that that includes and where it would go. I know you guys have seen that a couple of different times. Sunshine Oaks, which is, again, part of a phase one. And a couple of different things that we're able to do here. One, we had an outdoor playground that we were going to put at Palmer. We feel like this, now that we have this property, again, it gives us much, much better ability to put the playground and the bathroom kind of on the west side of the Sunshine Oaks facility, or park. We improved the parking to expand that. The barn, I say a revamp, it's not going to continue to be a barn. And along with, again, the additional two pavilions, we see this as an area that will open up some of the fencing from Bradford Creek Greenway to cut, to tie all this together. So it's almost like a little mini park in the middle of the city. We have the parking either here from gravel side or at the trailhead, all of that. And then in between all of that or around that, we would be able to put disc golf throughout the course of Sunshine Oaks. That would be a phase one, which is fairly inexpensive. A lot of reasons is because of the playground and the bathroom.
Would we have security out there? I mean, we're going to have a bathroom out there and pavilions, is at least a camera or something?
I think we can. And part of what we're doing, just so you know, is we're, and one of the things that's on here is security for Palmer and Dublin Park, some different features there. So maybe when we get there, we can always look to add that. That's a great point, Connie. All right, the Hardeman Roundabout, that's already been approved, but we moved the money over to this fund. And that's on the east side. We're already acquiring right away, right now. The other neat thing about that in talking with the schools, as you guys know and heard, the schools are moving up by a year their build of that elementary school. We had a great meeting with the developer and the school system. And where we have to tie in on the other side to Mater and, Masheel, I'm sorry, Masheel to Seeger's. The school, with the property in front of the school, and on that side is looking to help us because they know that they're pushing this forward. We want to see this full connection from east to west occur. And we feel comfortable that in working with the schools, they can help us on the west side. This takes care of the east side. The developer's responsible for the parks in the middle.
Will the school be opening in '25 or '26? I can't remember the original date.
I think they're looking to, well, the original date was as late as '27.
Right.
It's right now, '25 is when they're looking and looking to get in there.
Very good.
Yep. A couple, so that's everything that was in, the numbers that we talk about, the $12 million, it's all just parked in there. I think, you know, we know it's there. And then you ask, what else is in this budget? Just to remind you guys, already funded in our budget was the $270,000 for the comp plan. Mary Beth, when's the next time that we'll be talking about that?
It will be June, July, I reckon.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. What we added in here, talking through and understanding, we need to have a phase two for street lighting. We've added about half a million dollars in there to continue to work on improving street lighting within the city. Right now, there's a study being done by the folks who did the lights to start with, looking at the areas of concern that the public gave us. And a couple of, also, our main thoroughfares that may not be lit as well as we wanted them to. We're waiting to get that back, but we wanted to follow through and make sure this was in there. So when we got back the recommendations, we could bring to council a plan for you to approve to move and improve, continue to improve, street lighting.
Is there any chance that we can add lighting for Mill Road on Balch from Mill to Brownsperry? There's no current lighting along that Millstone subdivision is on the right. The dog park is on the left. Is there any chance this would be part of that, or?
I would have to look and see. Maybe, Steve, based on what you're saying, you could give a list of the things that we maybe already have them looking at. Yeah, so if it's not on there, we can get them to look at that too. And then prioritize based on that.
Also, along...
I'm sorry, I will, yes, I will.
Can you add along Brownsperry there by the community center? There's no lighting in that strip either, it's really dark.
I'll add that too.
That was another one that we looked at. That we, I think it's on there, but we'll make sure. So just give us those and we'll make sure. We want to make sure, again, that we continue. We did a great job of getting it in. Now we want to make sure that we continue to add value. And then lastly, what was already in there is the Dublin Five Lights. Cory, that was one where you bid, you put a bid out, didn't get anything back. You now have folks who are getting ready to be able to put these up?
Yeah, it'll be on the next couple of days.
Is that the 22nd or the June for one? Okay, so it's coming. You guys are going to approve the installation of that. That was already in the budget and will get put up. What's that?
We're going to vote on it.
You'll get to approve on that. Um, additional capital that's in here, you know, one of the things we do right now is, we have, Roger, how much do we have available about every year? About $1,001,000 for capital? 1.2, it's going up. We used that in our original budget. But as we get into mid-year, these are some of the things that we've added. Couple of police vehicles, recreation, IT and building, all add a vehicle. They've added people and they need, you know, especially with IT, needing to get, you know, to different complexes. We add vehicles there. And then I put Public Works and Engineering on multiple projects. So let's go to Public Works, what does that mean? Let's go back to make sure, it's about $750,000 that we're adding for Public Works. And you can see a dump truck, two pickup trucks, an aerial lift truck. You know, we don't have any additional backups, we're having to rent. So when we have to fix traffic lights or change out lights, if ours is down, and a lot of times you can't even rent them, so that. Two different plans, so the $30,000 and the $15,000, we'll do one or the other to improve city hall parking lot, hydraulic, some, whatever the heck that is. Security lights on the backside of Public Works. Unfortunately, they've had some vandalism there. We want to make sure we add some lights there. The cemetery storage building and then street light and electricity storage buildings, that'll be on the Public Works complex. An ATV at the cemetery and another Ford that was purchased in March. So all of these add up to about $750,000. One of the things that we continue to see is the lead time to get a lot of these vehicles. So adding this now, in some instances, may mean it carries over, but it's all needed based on what Public Works has to have to get their job done. Engineering adds about $1.3 million. And that, in many instances, this is for the engineering to accomplish these projects. Bradley Street improvements, the Mill Road ditch improvements. And I've got, there's a couple more slides after this to show you percentage of completion right now. Hughes Road, Ole Mass and Pike Engineering Intersection, Balch and Gooch, Balch and Brownsperry, Royal Drive Portal and the Mill Road Sidewalk Study, to be able to look at that. That's Mill Road from County Line to the Trailhead.
Is there a chance to, down the road, to putting Roundabout at Mill and Balch?
At Mill.
Right in front of the strip.
Not so far.
No, not in front, I mean, this is like number four, not in front of yours. You're like, almost there. You know where I'm talking about, like where it dead ends at Mill?
I know where.
Oh, okay.
I'm pretty happy to have two additional ones in here.
I do know, but I'm just, you know, I'm always asking for more. Okay. Okay. Sure. Right, it's, and it's one of those things that's just really bad two times a day. And one school starts and one school gets out.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Also in here is the Royal Drive Traffic Light. And we had, we talked about that. But as you guys know, Royal Drive, you could, there's, how many acres is that property?
It's 160 acres.
160? Yeah, so the UAH property, right, would be from County Line to where the existing FedEx building is, about 160 acres. We had a great meeting, well, we've had two good meetings in the last week with the developer and then some of the folks that are looking to come there. And so in working with them, it may come sooner than we even thought as far as something that is a really neat plan for the 160 acres there. It's something that's really, a lot of things are truly beneficial for Madison. Again, part of putting that money in right now is to make sure that the full traffic light and phase one to the back end of that property is taken care of. And then phase two would come down the road. It's the more expensive piece. It's also the piece that connects Royal Drive to County Line, which is a big, big deal when you have the buses on Westchester and now you're going to have Liberty, Heritage, James Clements, and then whatever the new elementary school is. So we're working with the schools on that also, because the schools, again, have the ability in some instances to help us, at worst case, talk to us, but they've moved that up a year. So having that light at County Line is just such a safety feature. The cool thing is when the developer brings the full plan, Mary Beth's working on the, I won't, I just say payback, but the revenues that would come in from property tax and sales tax for that. So we'll be able to show you guys that, but that one continues to move forward.
Real quick, that lines up with that gravel concrete plant, doesn't it? On the Limestone County side, isn't?
It lines up with the SCS Works, which is the cabinet maker. They actually made all the cabinets, all the shelving in their team store at Toyota Field. And we've, we are, as we're working on the design of the traffic signal, because that's been authorized, we have reached out to them because they probably are going to want to realign their driveway to where that future road will come out and for the traffic signal to make sure that they can take advantage of that.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. And then we talk about a lot of capital improvement projects that are under designed through what engineering has going. And just to give you guys percentage, so it's project and then, in essence, percentage of completion. Silo, sidewalk, sidewalk is done. You've got the Seeger sidewalk, home place sidewalk ramps, the Highland ditch, the Concord sidewalk and ramps, all these, as far as percentage of, and again, under design to then in many instances get completed. Main and Martin drainage, the Brownsperry culvert. And Mill Road ditch and rehab, you guys have seen what's happened into that ditch right now. Madison Boulevard resurfacing plan, that's taking a little bit longer because Aldot is involved and we just have to meet the Aldot specs. Waltrana Gooch sidewalk and signal, which has been in there for two years. Burgreen and Hardeman signal, 60% design. Seeger's and Masheel widening, about 80% design. Huntsville Brownsperry, Gillespie Waltrana signal. County Line Road and Royal is about 20%. And we'll have all this, we can put this on the website so everybody has this. Madison Branch Roundabout is about 98% complete. Portal and Shelton Ditch, haven't really started. I think they put 1% just to show no, it wasn't zero. Balch and Gooch Roundabout, I can tell you right now, that's a lot farther along because I've seen the design for that. And I'm able to then go talk to the plumber right there to see what they would be willing to give us from a right-of-way standpoint, or at least sell us to be able to do that. And then the Balch Brownsperry Roundabout. Hughes and Ole Mass and Pike design is about 30% complete. The Balch widening, it says 85, I was at the NPO meeting today. They're saying that that's more like 95% complete. Bradley Street Downtown widening and walkway. Hughes, Mill, Portal, signal upgrade, which hasn't really started. Huntsville Brownsperry and Burgreen Roundabout is about 70% designed. The Palmer Road Bridge is 75. Mill Road Sidewalk is about 10%. So all of those projects there is the percentage of progress that has been made on, and then, you know, so...
Yeah, I talked to Michael about the Burgreen Brownsperry Roundabout. And something to note is, they don't want to do that during the school year. They want to try and do that in the summer. So even if the design gets finished, if it's the middle of the school year, it'll be the next summer before they start the construction.
Yeah, which I fully understand.
Oh, absolutely understand that.
One of the other things that's in this budget is about $265,000. In essence, we have a special projects account that has $245,000 in it. This is how we would, in essence, spend it. So mid-year, we're adding about $20,000 to this. And these are the things that we want to do with it. First, city hall access improvements. Unfortunately, with today's world, we have to figure out how to tighten up security here at City Hall. Where we have it right now for council meetings, we need it at the front door. With the city, it's a little bit more difficult because you have two different entrances and you don't have an elevator. So we've got to be somewhat creative in making this work. And then the second part of that is manpower. You know, chief will tell you right now that, you know, he's, it's all he can do to get his people, let alone have folks at the door all the time. So Megan in, coming into HR has already reached out. How do other people do it? How do they do it at Huntsville? How do they do it at the county? In both of those instances, they've, a lot of times hire retired officers to just man that during off hours or during the day and then close it up at night.
Will we add a metal detector then, do you think?
We might. We might. We definitely would put this one at the front door and, and, and then again, we got to figure out the balance because again, would you completely close downstairs? You can do that for a lot of it. It's not very helpful to our community to have to come in, go all the way down, but they can do it. But again, helpful versus safety is a balance.
So.
Yeah.
We gotta look at A to Z.
Yeah.
You know, they do make those, I don't know if it would, if it would make a difference or how much it is, it's just an idea. The chairs that you sit in that go down in spares.
Hmm.
May, it may, I mean, it's a lot, they're a lot cheaper than elevators.
Yeah, but that doesn't help if you're in a wheelchair.
Well, it, it does, that's what it's designed.
If you have, if you have.
You would come, you would come in here, be in your wheelchair, go down and then.
No, but I mean, you would get into the seat that goes down and your wheelchair would still be up at the top.
You'd have to have somebody.
They, they have, it, I mean, we'll have to research it, but they have the, the things that, that, it's like a, it's a carrier thing.
Right. She's just saying, once you're at the bottom, then what do you do?
You get back in that same thing and it'll bring you up.
No, but how do you? Anyway.
I, I don't, I don't design them.
Research will happen.
I don't design them. I'm just saying, it may be an idea, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I absolutely. We, 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 but I, I, we want to look at anything that we can do that creates safety and, and we'll look at all facets of that. Along those same lines, HR, City Hall Revamp, when I say that, a lot of what we're, that goes towards the human resources side. You know, human resources is not really set up for success right now. A lot, they have meetings every day, they have new employees coming in, and you've got to go all the way through HR to the very back, back there. You know, we need to look to change that. We also are adding, we have a position that's been added. And then the other part is, HR has one way in and the City Clerk's Office has one way in. They meet, so we need to find a way where we can put a door there to make sure that there's connectivity. So we're looking to do that. Records Room addition downstairs, we have the front of that building, we're trying to see, that room that we possibly could revamp to add about three offices in, maybe four. So we're looking to do that, that in turn gives us more room. And then Palmer and Dublin Park, both from a communication system standpoint. Corey, you got two seconds just to tell them real quickly what that looks like as far as, you know, I can tell you right now, part of, well, I'll let you do it, just why that's critical and then Connie going back, if we look to do like a Sunshine Oaks, we could look to possibly do something like that, too.
We have looked at different options because we have a lot of storms that popped up. Actually, Madison made the Weather Channel, I believe, about a month ago because we had a storm pop up, blew the bleachers over, somebody videotaped it, sent it to, I forget the guy's name at the Weather Channel, but we are famous for that. But when the storm pops up, especially at Palmer Park, there's, if you're in the back at Wesco, you are stuck there and all of you that have kids that played in the park understand that. And we kind of have the same issue at Dublin as well. So what we want to do is look at a system that is predictive. So lightning, for example, it'll sense, don't ask me how it does it, I'm not, I'm not in the science of it, but it'll, it'll predict when lightning is about to strike, if a storm's coming, and then allow us to notify everybody in the park through a speaker system. So if there's an issue coming, we can quickly evacuate the park. The incident I, that we made the Weather Channel on, we had four recades trying to run the twenty-eight different fields that night, trying to clear the fields and, you know, people are like, the sun's out, well, you know, our, our phones are going off telling us we, it's bearing down on us and it's just impossible. So it's a real safety issue for, for both of those parks. And I think this would, is, is, is the best solution. We, we researched all of them. A lot of golf courses have them. The problem with a lot of the systems, if you light a cigarette, it'll trigger it. This doesn't do that. So we're, we're not buying something that's not going to be useful for us.
Good. So again, there's already two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in the budget for this, this is only adding about twenty thousand dollars, it's just what, you know, you guys would appropriate to be able to support to do. Couple staffing things, two main ones on the left are added, the two on the right were already in the budget. An ERP support specialist, I think it's different than what's in here, but that's what the actual title will be. You know, in essence, we have a system called New World right now, which is our ERP system. You know, we need someone in the city, it would be under IT housed, just because from a space standpoint until we can find some more space, housed in finance, to help with managing that. It has an enormous amount of data in it, but so much of that is troubleshooting what you want from the system, but also creating reports, extracting the information out of that to give, whether it's HR, finance, or whoever needs it. So this person would support our ERP system here, here in, and, and be under Chris in, in IT. EMS, from a captain's standpoint, Chief has asked for this, probably in the last two budget cycles, mid, last mid-year and then at the first one, we didn't, I say we didn't support it, we, we just added other things. But the critical piece here is that's the person who does all the, the, the planning for the training. And part of where that's critical is as we continue to, how would I say this? There's a lot of folks, you know, we have folks retiring and then we have new folks coming on who don't have as much experience and need a lot more training. And so I think this gives us one person who helps and is responsible for the three shifts that come through to make sure that they continue to stay updated and get trained. And so they, that's their specialty and that's what we would be adding. We had a facilities manager. We then purchased two or three more facilities. We've, we're going to upgrade this if, if given approval to a facilities director, which would direct, would report directly to the Mayor's Office, but would be the person who helps us manage these facilities. And then economic development's already in the budget. I think what Mary Beth and I have talked about is with a lot of the build-out already occurring, there's some different needs that we have and some of the skill sets. And so we want that position hired, but we're going to look to adjust what we're looking for in that position to get a maximum result for the city. Just wanted to put this in there, that's the picture of what the flyovers would look like. They actually don't fly over Madison. They fly into town Madison.
Right.
All right. I know, but it's just having fun with you. It's having fun with you, Margie. And, and, but that's what they look like. And so that's, but they're about twenty percent complete. I know the guys at Aldott today were amazed at how much progress they have continued to make, but it's about a twenty percent complete status.
Didn't remind me when it's, it's supposed to be done.
That is, end of twenty-four?
November, wasn't it?
November of twenty-four?
November.
Yeah. So I go back to, to questions, but that's just trying to give you guys just a high level of kind of our thinking behind a lot of what's in there. I know Finance Committee has this, I guess you'll give it to the full council. And then we would be looking to bring, bring the budget forward for your approval at the first meeting in June.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. You did a great job of flying right through there. So I had a couple of questions as you went along, so I'd just like a little clarification.
No, there are questions right now, please.
Yeah, yeah. One was on the police cars adding two. I know we have several cars that are already beyond their time, just adding two isn't going to catch us up. So is it possible? I know it's hard to buy the cars now and that's definitely an issue, but if we don't even have the money in the budget to do it, if they come available, shouldn't we have the money there?
It's there, if we, yeah, if we decided.
That's to additional to what we have in the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, there is. Chief, how many did you already have in the budget? Six?
We have six in there. We, we put six in there about every year, there about. Is that right?
Four, and that gives you two.
Sorry, can you come to the mic? I can't, I can't even hear.
Didn't you say four detectives?
Hold on one second, let him get to the microphone.
So what, what we asked for in mid-year was to replace a couple of the detective's vehicles that are very, very old and two of them had blown engines and it's not worth, you know, it's, it's more expensive to replace the engine than what the car's worth. So we're looking to do replacements there. So we're not talking about a, a fully marked vehicle with all the stripings, marks, lights and all that other stuff.
So it's two, two detective vehicles?
Yes, sir.
So we could look at that. I mean, that's, that's one of the things if we decided we wanted to add, again, part of where I've learned, you know, we gotta work with him on priorities. They, in working with one of our senators, there might be additional monies and they were looking at some other things that are pretty costly that, you know, that they prioritize between chief and chief that we may need from a city standpoint. But we'll work with them and see what we could possibly do. There's, there's money there. Next year, there's about twelve, one point two million dollars that we would have to appropriate and I can tell you, Public Works and Recreation both have, have, you know, received a lot of equipment. Most of it would probably be used next year for police. I think Fire is in pretty good shape with what they have.
Yeah, I think Fire, if I understand correctly, Chief Bailey. Fire, I did see with the, the squad cars, some of, a lot of them are beyond and in order to even catch up, we have to add and so.
We, we should be pretty close. I mean, because we've, we've worked on that since, I mean, I, I know.
We're, we're going to have some vacancies coming up with retirements and, and people resigning, that'll give us the, the cars we need for, at least for this year to outfit the people coming out of the academy. So we'll be good there.
I know we get at replacing the ones that need to be retired, the cars themselves that need to be retired out.
So we, we're, we're good for this year. The ones that we'll be replacing that, that will need replacement for being taken offline, we can wait till next year's budget or the, the, the four budget.
Cars a year and we usually replace two to three cars a year through insurance.
Right. So we're, we're, we're good for right now, but as we, we grow, we're going to need more. So we'll wait for our regular operational budget for that one. Right now, all we're asking for is just the two detective vehicles because we, we didn't expect that to happen and one went right after the other.
As they always do.
Right, exactly.
Chief, could you stay up here? I have one question on staffing. I've heard the superintendent talk about wanting to have an, an SRO in each school and we have a new middle school coming online, but I'm not seeing an increase in your staffing. Are, are you going to be able to provide an SRO?
Absolutely not, not, not right now. In fact, I had a conversation with him and he asked what it would take and, and I got some figures together and, and sent it to him of what it would take to, to be able to staff that, but.
And in talking with that, it's a great question because the schools are saying, hey, we may be able to help with some of the funding because obviously we added a mill that was for safety. They used a lot of it for hardening the schools, but they also in hardening the schools know they need to put those SROs in place. And so they may utilize some of that. Once they add in the budget, then we could look to add the, the officers. It's just all we can do to hire what we need right now.
Unfortunately, we've got, we've got about eight either in field training or in the academy right now. It's going to take a full year to get them up to speed, to be able to put them, you know, in the, on shifts so we can pull people down for replacements of the SROs. We're, we're good to cover the, the New Journey Middle School and some of the losses we had at the SRO position. We just don't have enough for additional SRO positions right now.
Okay. Do you have anything else for?
And you said you had more than one?
Yeah, back onto the school and the Hardeman Roundabout. That has, okay, about that. You kind of read, you know, you kind of ran through what the school was going to be doing and stuff. Could you just give a little more detail on that?
Sure. So in working with the school, we had a meeting with the developer, us and the school system on when the school was going to come in and how we would make sure that we got the road for sure from east all the way to the school. What the school said is, look, we want to see the entire thing done, so when we go out with our forty or fifty million dollars, we feel like in working with you guys, we may be able to roll the rest of that in to complete the McSeel-Seegers connection from the school to Seegers. And they're willing, you know, to talk to us about that. We have a development agreement with the developer. They might look to enter into that same type of thing to complete the other side. So we would be, the three of us are working to see if we can't, when that school opens, have the entire thing done.
Okay, so we need any extra money to cover any of that or are you just hoping that they come through?
We don't. We, we have money in our budget right now for the design, as you saw, of what's needed to connect it. So that's already being done. The key would be then building it, well, securing the right-of-way and then building it. And we're, we will work with the schools and the developer to make sure that gets done. We feel comfortable we get it done when school opens.
Okay, but is it coming part of midterm or is that next year's budget that's?
It would, it's not in this budget because we don't have a good, solid game plan on how we would accomplish that.
Okay.
But that's great.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Yeah. Okay, yeah, because I go over, I saw what needs to be done. I just didn't know exactly where we were on the stages. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, I know I did go through that fast. One thing I would recommend, especially council, if we can, at some point, if you get a chance to sit down with Michael and/or Michelle, to see what they're looking to do on kind of a three-step approach as we do these projects to, you know, secure the funding, to design it and then, you know, continue to put it in the budget to build it. And they just have a good game plan almost, you know, every year to keep these things going to, to get them done. We, we are using outside folks to, to make this happen more quickly as far as getting more projects looked at instead of just doing it all in-house and doing one and then one and then one. Or you can see there's multiple projects that they're managing and they're doing a really good job of continuing to move these forward.
Mayor, I've got one question on the New Capital Fund Thirty-Eight page, that slide. I want to, and I don't know if this is a Roger question or, or a question for you, but I want to make sure I'm tracking where, what, what these numbers represent. And on the Hexagon Building in Quartz Line, which has four point nine eight eight million, we, that, that covers the original purchase price that was just over four million. That was ARPA money, right?
It's, I think a little, the answer is yes.
Because ARPA was, we had it like five point one or something in ARPA money. This isn't money that we're just pulling out of general fund, it's ARPA money, right?
Correct.
So you, okay, so where did the, okay. Yeah.
One point five is what?
Right.
You're talking about the Hexagon facility. She's talking about Hexagon, not, not the, the community center. ARPA. Okay. Which is leftover. So you're putting four million dollars in there for the build-outs, what you're saying? Yeah.
That's additional from, that's not counting the original purchase price?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't explain that very well.
Okay, so then when we were originally putting the ARPA money to the side for audit purposes, because we have to account for everything that we use that for, are you moving then part of this? Is it easy to trace what you're doing with, in terms of the Fund Thirty-Eight? Because you just had a ledger item for the ARPA money when it first came in? It wasn't in a separate account? Okay.
It's just going to be the nine eighty-eight though that he's tracking. Because the ninety-eight, nine eighty-eight's the ARPA, the other four millions.
General.
Okay, so then let me ask you this also. In, in terms of the community center funding, if indeed, I think initially we had a presentation of what we anticipated MVP might be able to raise. So if you move this money, all of this money over to Fund Thirty-Eight, and if, let's say, MVP is successful in finding a naming rights sponsor or something else, what happens to this money that is in excess that's in Fund Thirty-Eight? Is that what the resolution's going to say when we separate this out into this new fund? It's not? Okay.
This gets us to two years and then this, and then, and then we've got one year left to finish it and that's where, goes back to what Connie was saying, so it's not all in there.
I think the community center was estimated at ten million.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So I got one quick question, too. So I got one quick question too. So in there, we had the one point five from the library sale going in. Didn't we use that to buy that facility? What do we use to buy the facility with? That's right. So we funded it with cash, and then we were going to take that, those funds, to use, to do something. Never mind.
Is part of this money, the library money, though?
One point five of it. It's what we did, we were going to use the one point five to buy the facility, and that was back whenever. But then, we were able to fund it with cash, and we're now taking that one point five and putting it into the repair. There you go.
Any other questions on the mid-year budget? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Roger, for your work on this. Next, we have a discussion about public comments trial period resolution. We temporarily restructured public comments for our meetings. That's to go through May under our resolution. And it is time to discuss what your thoughts are on restructuring or going back to the way it was. Anybody have any opinions?
I'm happy with the way it's going. I think it probably gets more time to discuss, A, what's on there, and then B, additional time. And quite honestly, it seems like to me, it's, the meetings have been more productive and been able to get stuff done faster. So, you know, we're spending an hour on, you know, public comments and those type things, and fifteen minutes on business, and now we're going to spend thirty minutes on business and thirty minutes on business.
Okay.
I like that there are three opportunities for the public. First, public comments in general about the agenda items. Second, if there's a public hearing. And then, third, anything else they want to talk about, they get additional time each time. So it's not all the same pot of time. Whereas before, with the public comments only at the front, anything that was on the agenda, plus anything else you wanted to talk about, came out of the same three minutes. Now, you could have three minutes at the beginning, three minutes at the end, and then you get five minutes if there's a public hearing. So I think that that's a good thing.
Well, not to mention our department heads very well, to go home.
And the business is done.
Now they get here sometimes, some six o'clock, so.
Okay.
I just agree with what Connie said. I mean, I think it gives folks plenty of opportunity to talk, and especially since you're saying if you're here to speak to an agenda item, we definitely want to hear about that first. And at the end, you know, we're giving them really three times the amount of time to speak. So, I mean, I think it's worth the last couple of meetings.
Okay. I still like it at the beginning. I think the voice of the public is the important thing to hear, to have them able to talk first. I understand, they can always come back and talk again in the other times, too, right? If they talk at the first, they can talk in the middle and at the end. But I still prefer that they, their voices heard first, you know, the public. They're the people that put us in these seats, and I believe they should be able to talk first.
I like that they're the people that put us in the seat. That's why I think they need, they deserve more time.
Well, they can still have their talk on each of those topics.
But they only get three minutes at the beginning.
But then they're allowed to talk, then let's make it two things. If you want to talk about something, fine. If you also want to talk on an agenda item, that's good, too. Then give them the time. I just prefer having it at the beginning, when everyone's here, and everyone's here to listen, before things drag out and other people go home. I just thought by having it at the end, there were less people that came and talked. Whereas before, there were many more that talked at the beginning. And I just, you know, I believe that's my opinion.
But sometimes, when folks talk at the beginning, we actually answer their question as the meeting progresses. So, you know, and they would still get an opportunity to talk at the end. I don't know. And should we get Greg and John's input on this as well?
Well, I think Greg could, he actually timed the additional public comments that occurred the first time this went into effect. And I think he clocked it at fifty-one minutes, because people had multiple times, opportunities to speak. So I think he did share that with me. I have a legal question for Mr. Chilvor. Currently, we have a, we had a temporary resolution to do this for a trial period through the month of May. So if we were to change the, I think it's an ordinance, isn't it, for the order of the meeting?
Yes, well, we have now, basically, the, basically, the code sets out precisely what the order is. It does give some leeway as far as moving some of this around a bit. But the resolution basically clarified that for a specific period of time, as far as being a temporary movement of those hearings.
So if we were to entertain making it permanent, to change, to amend that ordinance?
Yes, it would take, it would basically take a change in the city code in order to make it permanent. And if you wanted to extend it for another temporary period, you could do that temporarily, obviously with another resolution for, you know, again, whatever period y'all might want to see fit. But if wanted to be permanent, it would have to change in the code.
So would we need a first reading, is my question, at like the May twenty-second meeting, before making it permanent?
Like any other ordinance, yeah. Of course, we can suspend the rules and, or have a first reading and a second, whichever the council prefers.
I would prefer not to suspend the rules on this particular thing. I'd like to hear some public comment on it.
Okay, so then, if we wanted, I'm sensing the majority likes the change. So if we were to add it to the May twenty-second agenda for our first reading, to, you could propose an amendment to the?
We could, and it would be a very small adjustment to the code. So it's something that we could put together very quickly and have ready for Monday.
Okay, and then we wouldn't vote on it until June? So we would get?
June twelfth, the next.
At the next meeting, and so that would be the, and then we would conduct the June meeting that way. Okay. All right, I think I'm getting the read. But I'll certainly check in with John and Greg to make sure, before we go there. And so, all right, number five, animal control appropriation. Mara, that is you.
Yes, ma'am. I do have a slide, and it's the information that I sent to you all in an email, just to give you a little, oh, it's small. A little bit of background. Oh, well, it's just one slide, so I don't have to do that. And Chief is here as well, and this is something that I've been talking with the mayor and Chief Gandy about. And currently, we have in our fiscal year budget, an appropriation for animal rescue. And in two thousand and nineteen, Marv said that they took in two hundred and twenty animals, and you can see the figure's actually hundred and five, two thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand and nineteen, then two thousand and twenty. In their appropriation request, they said they took in two hundred and twenty animals, they took in ninety-seven. And then it has the breakout there to the right of kind of a cost per animal. The last year we have, which is the most recent current total year, Marv said in their appropriation request that they took two hundred and twenty animals from the city, and they took fifty-two, which brings a total, and I can't read that, is it two hundred and eighty-eight?
Two eighty-eight, forty-six.
Right, almost three hundred dollars. So in talking with mayor and Chief Gandy about it, I would like to propose that instead of having an appropriation request every summer, that we move that fifteen thousand dollar line item into the police department's budget, under a line item marked Madison Animal Control or Madison Animal Rescue, whatever Chief thinks would be best. And like I said, he and I have talked, and so he's here to answer questions. And the reason for this is several reasons. I'd like the idea of the police department having control over this amount. I feel like basically writing a fifteen thousand dollar rubber stamp check every year is maybe not the most responsible use of our funds. Oh, perf, oh, that's so much better, thank you. I feel like I was at the doctor with the eye chart. I like the idea of keeping at the fifteen thousand dollars. If we were to offer, say, a hundred dollars an animal, it would have been fifty-two hundred dollars. The other reason that I would like to propose this change is, right now, we're writing one check to Marv for fifteen thousand dollars, and they are not always picking up every animal. And Chief can speak to the number of animals. I think it's averaged like three to six a year, that for whatever reason, usually it's big dogs, that Marv will not pick up. Chief and the animal control folks reach out to another rescue. They come and pick up the animal, but they receive no compensation for it. So that's one more reason that I just like the idea of the police department just having that greater control. They would be able to reimburse whatever rescue that would be picking up the animal. And also, it would give them a little bit of an extra cushion should something come up. Like, I know people, whenever people reach out to me, and they're like, my dog died, my cat died, who do I give this food it to? I'll say, can you bring it inside to the police department? Because some people have left it outside, which isn't good with the weather and some bugs. And so people are very generous in our community in giving the food. But this would give them a cushion of knowing, you know, the animals are covered. It could maybe help with vet expenses should Marv refuse to do that. And it's been a tough situation where, and I leave it to animal control, and they're absolutely experts. If a dog or cat is hit, is it better to euthanize? Is it better to take it to a vet? This would at least give them the peace of mind to go to, and I think we use Whitworth, to go, hey, do a quick evaluation. If we can save this dog or cat with a reasonable amount of funds, let's do it. If it's not, let's not, let's put it down. So my request to wrap all of this up is that I'd like to ask in the next budget for 2023, 2024, we move the fifteen thousand dollars from an appropriation request under the police. And Chief Gandy is here to speak if you have any questions. I didn't get any questions via email, what I sent out, other than Teddy said he would have a question for me.
I've got one for Chief.
Oh, okay, Chief.
Welcome back, Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Chief.
So where do these numbers come from?
Oh, these are animal, the numbers given to us by MAC, Madison Animal Control. Chief sent those to me, and it was in the email I sent to you, under his email.
Okay, so did you come to Mara about this, or did she come to you about this?
She talked to me about it, she came to me.
That's all I've got.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just trying to be proactive.
Mayor, do you want to weigh in on this, in terms of how your budget works, and how, where you think the line item ought to be?
Honestly, no, do I want to weigh in? But I will.
Okay.
I don't want any part of this. For fifteen thousand dollars, we solve a problem. I don't, again, I don't know what numbers are what, and I don't even know when you got the two hundred and twenty number. Where's that two twenty?
Every year, Marv puts that in their appropriation request, that they pick up two hundred and twenty animals from the city. Every year, it's been the same number that they have put in their appropriation request.
Okay, so I think it's interesting, though, that it's gone from a hundred and five to fifty-two, and yet we've grown that much.
Right.
Which means that more people know about an entity that they just take the dogs straight to, that they don't even bring it here, I don't think. All I know is this, and I just go all the way back to where this even started. I'd been in office about a month and a half or two months, and someone came in, you know, brought a dog, or came to see a dog, or was looking for a dog. And long story short, they called me and said, you have a dog back there that's being mistreated, yada, yada, yada. And I want you to do something about it. And I said, well, do I need to do something about it? She goes, because I just called PETA, and that right there was all I needed to hear. And for the next, since two thousand and nine, we've only appropriated fifteen thousand dollars to take care of animals. And we in turn haven't had one more phone call on something along those lines.
Well, but nobody's allowed in the shelter either.
Well, they weren't.
I mean, I can't even go into this shelter.
So I think in this case, it's, I mean, it's, I don't know if they need one more thing to take care of. I mean, I understand Marv's passion, and part of her passion, quite honestly, let's just face it, you don't like Marv. You don't. And it's part of, so do I, I don't care. For fifteen thousand dollars to manage this for us is incredibly, such a strong value. But I don't care how it's done.
Right, they would still get paid, you know. Like I said, it's the fifty-two animals, and I, he also gave the figures of return to owner. By far, the majority of animals are returned to owner. They find sparkies, sparkies microchipped. Hundred and seventy animals in nineteen went back to their owners, one forty-eight in twenty, one twenty-four, one eighty-three in twenty-twenty-two. So the number's going down each year. The point I'm trying to make is, should Marv turn down taking that animal in, I feel that the other rescue should be compensated, and it gives the police department and MAC?
I thought we added a hundred dollars per animal for that.
That's exactly what I want to do, but we didn't do that.
You didn't do that last year?
No, sir, that's exactly what I want to do, is basically still leave the fifteen thousand, still give five hundred, or the fifty-two times a hundred to Marv. But if a new leash, or forgotten felines, or Friends of Rescue, or another one that they reach out to, they would get that hundred dollars. But you're absolutely right, that was what we had talked about doing, but it just got lost in translation.
So I guess the question would be, is Marv willing to do it for fifty-two hundred dollars?
Or we just say you get a hundred dollars an animal?
Let me go back to this. This is, the whole reason I asked my question, and the reason I waited to ask my question, is because I knew the answer. I knew the answer. I knew he was going to tell me that you went to him. Because the last police chief that was here, you went to him.
Right.
Okay, and, you know.
Isn't that what we're supposed to do?
No, Mara, it's not what we're supposed to do.
If we see a problem?
It's his job to manage the police department, it's his job to manage fire departments, her job to manage the city clerk. It's not your job, it's not my job.
I'm not managing it. I asked him if he would want that line item. And would you want this, Chief?
My answer is always going to be, I want once in the best interest of the animal.
Absolutely, yeah.
But it just goes, I'm going to finish my statement. Okay, it goes back to you've done this since we've been in office, okay? We have almost a forty million dollar budget, and you're concerned about fifteen thousand dollars. And you sent me an email that said you were going to save us money, show me.
Because we would give fifty-two hundred dollars to the rescue rather than fifteen thousand to the rescue.
Okay, so we're going to get?
And he would have the balance.
So we're going to give Chief fifty-two hundred dollars.
No, we're going to give him fifteen thousand. I still want the line item of the fifteen thousand.
And you're not saving any money.
He would still have the money in his account, yeah, all right.
Well, so I think a bigger thing, going back to what, if you go back out of that part of it, and go back to, not so much even the dogs, but would, we don't even know if Marv would be willing to cut this deal for a hundred dollars a dog. We don't know that.
Oh, I'm sure they would.
What if they turn around and said, no, that's our, we're out? Then what do we do? Now Chief has nobody that he can take the dogs to.
Well, the other rescue.
I mean, I just think, I guess it goes back, are we trying, are we solving a problem, or we don't have a problem? For fifteen thousand dollars, our problem's managed, and it's been managed since two thousand and nine. Can it be managed more, you know, do they keep track? I just think.
Because Chief goes and picks up a dog that's been hit on the side of the road, takes it to the vet, that's a five thousand dollar vet bill. Then what?
Can you tell us what happens when a dog is hit, what the current procedure is? I don't know.
I honestly don't know, because I haven't run across that yet. I do know that we try to rehouse every animal that is capable of being rehoused. If an animal is beyond the point where they're suffering, and there's just nothing else we can do with it, then they'll be taken to a vet and it'll be put down.
And I think we're currently doing that, if an animal's been hurt like that. We're taking it to what we're.
I'd be interested to see how many, how many animals are going directly to Marv, you know, being bypassed by us. They're bypassing the city, because if you go a hundred and five down to fifty-two.
Oh, I'm sure they go to shelters, and they probably go to shelters in Athens and Decatur and pick up animals, yeah.
So that means now, we have police department doing that?
No, no, Marv, the people that work for Marv will go to Athens and say, let me, well, Marv doesn't do it, but other rescues, that's what they do. They go, Friends of Rescue, whoever, will go to the area shelters.
So we're not?
And we're not doing that. This is animals that are not tagged, that are picked up in the city, and Marv has given first dibs, so to speak, and sometimes Marv turns them down, and it goes to another rescue.
But I think part of it is too, Mara, so sometimes it can be as simple as they have a litter of dogs, cats, gerbils, I don't know. And instead of bringing them to City Hall, just? And, and, uh, and instead of bringing them to City Hall and just saying, here you go, they're bringing them to someone else. I mean, I think, I'd like to, if, if nothing else, guys, let's get some more information on what reality is with Marf. I mean, they give a number, it's obviously not the right number for what's coming from the city. Is it the right number for what they're managing, or are they continuing to solve a problem for our city? And the city's only costing us fifteen thousand dollars a year.
It could cost fifty-two hundred dollars, and that would give the, uh, police department money for other...
It could also cost twenty-five thousand dollars. And I can assure you, Chief's not willing to pull out an extra ten thousand dollars out of his budget.
Well, I have a question. I'm trying to, to understand how you're proposing this would work. So if you did a hundred dollars per dog or cat or animal, okay, then would you like have a tally, and then we would write one check at the end of the year? Or would you write, have, somebody have to write a check every single time? Because then you're tying up a lot of employee time, and that's what I'm trying to wrap my brain around.
Sure, it's about an animal a week. So, you know, if Marf comes in this week and they, they pick up the animal, they go to, I don't know, Revenue or wherever, and they get a hundred dollars. And then next week, when they say, no, we're not going to take that animal, I, I...
So it goes through the finance process fifty-two times instead of once.
But saves ten thousand dollars.
We're connecting an issue. I mean, I just feel like this, every year, this appropriation has so much...
I've, I've got, I've got my...
I feel like the police chief are the, uh, the police chief, that's his line item in his budget. Because he comes to us, he goes, I want to change this. We should, I don't think we should shove something down his throat.
It's not his line item. That's what I was trying to give it to him as a line item.
I'm saying this...
Would be a line.
This appropriation, unless they want to change it, in my opinion, we shouldn't change it. If they come to say this is a problem, then we look at appropriation differently, in, in, in my opinion. That's like us going to Cory, going, we're doing something else right here, here, like. I just think till they come to us and go, this isn't working, leave it alone.
Well, the whole idea was to give them more control, and when we talked about it, I got the impression you were supportive of it. But if you're not, I mean, this would be a great time to say, you know, you're not.
I, I just don't want to be in a position where we have to be the ones to house them because we can't house dogs.
You can't put him in that position. That's unfair.
Well, I just wanted to know what he thought.
That is unfair to do that.
I do. Another question, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, would it be possible to actually find out, just a little bit of research, what Marf is exactly doing for it?
I, I would be more than willing.
That would be wonderful information to have.
I'd be more than willing to take that and, and try to find out some information that, that helps us make a good decision. Yep. I'll make sure we do that. You betcha.
Hundred percent for that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, uh, for bringing this to our attention, and thank you for the discussion. And we, um, will stay tuned for more information from the mayor, uh, in terms of what, uh, other animals Marf is taking in.
I also want to see if we get it, if, if New Leash on Life has received any dogs or cats or gerbils, and if we've given them any money, because I don't know if we have or not. I thought we added that in there, but I don't remember that. But I think it was in there.
I think that would be the right thing to do.
If, if they're coming to do it, then again, if we're trying to support the, the organizations that are supporting us, that may be a change that we can make. But I'll get information on both ends and get back to you guys.
I would also like to know, is there, is there another organization that could take all the animals? Like, are we, would we be putting ourselves in a situation where we don't have a solution if, if you didn't give them the fifty? Because I, I'm not clear on who could support that need. Okay, so we covered the items that are on our agenda. Our next work session is tentatively scheduled for June twenty-first, that's a Wednesday. The one item that I have penciled in for that agenda is the mural guidelines that Mary Beth had talked to us about. If there are any other topics that you all are interested in adding to that agenda, um, let me know, um, and we can...